Yeah, I think that's Connie. Do you think that's Connie?
No, no.
All right, let's do a process.
That's Barbara Coons.
All right.
Is Connie?
Yes.
Okay.
That's, uh...
It has to be.
Joan Gate.
Yeah. All right.
Bob.
I know, Bob.
Everything is Bob.
Bob, Bob will nap all the time and have him take pictures.
Everything in one place?
Every time you're on it, you're just going to be like, oh shit.
I've always liked that.
I love to be out here taking answers.
I've had school students.
Really? All right.
It's exactly the same. We typically get a, uh, under whatever person.
Like a call ordered Penn Travis School District meeting for June 8th at 7:03 start of Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Lightfoot, could you please take rope off?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Mrs. Nissen.
Here.
Mr. Kachasik.
Here.
Dr. Koschko.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Leonard is at an IU meeting tonight to vote on a new executive director. Mr. Newell, he's absent. He is absent. Mr. Neiman.
President.
Mr. Petrusi.
Here.
Mr. Stovar.
Here.
Dr. Tre.
Here.
You have a more, Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. You're welcome. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the May 11th, 2015 meeting?
Motion.
Second by Mr. Kachasik.
Question.
Question being called for, all in favor of motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. Uh, information, Dr. Harris.
All right, thank you, Mr. Neiman. First, I'd like to start off by welcoming Dr. Carrie Thomas to come up front and join us. And the reason why this is exciting to contact her, it's the first time I ever faced her, because she just earned her doctorate this past week from Capella University. Congratulations.
Thank you.
How does it feel?
Good.
And I have to actually, her title was so long, I couldn't memorize it. So I have to actually read it. And I think there was 19 words at one point. Um, her dissertation is titled, I'll maybe break and count as I read, "The Relationship of Kindergarten Terranova Three Scores in Reading and Mathematics and Students Chronological Ages in First Grade and Their First Grade Terranova Three Assessment Scores in Reading and Mathematics Compared to Other Factors." How much was it about 30? That was about 30.
That's a bigger name plate than yours, Brett. Yes.
Now, how long were you working on that?
It took seven years.
Seven years?
When I started, I was like, our marriage is about eight years old and about 11 months of it, we weren't, I wasn't taking it. But I, um, finished the coursework in 2012. It's just I had a mentor that kind of disappeared for a while and then I got a new mentor. So a year and a half with my second mentor.
And what did you find out for your study? And you want to explain your study?
Well, what I looked at for my study was looking at if enrollment of students, especially in first grade, if they're young, on target, or older, and their influence on their academic performance and terranova testing. And I found that kindergarten terranova scores really can help predict first grade terranova scores as well as maternal educational levels have influence and family socioeconomic status have more influence than age. But the only, the only thing that I need to look, I would like to look further into ten, or for age, there's only, I think, four students that were eight. And a couple I knew had IEPs. So I think that would be a good factor to look into next time, having more even number of older students, younger students, and on target. Most of them were six, or most of them, students were seven, so. Um, but maternal education and socioeconomic status were big factors as well.
I'm really impressed you said I would like to look at it next time, because when I was done, I was, I don't think a week later I would be saying next time. And I don't know if your husband's happy with that.
Right now, I'm going through my principal papers, so I'm not done yet. So I'm just working along.
Hi, Mr. Chickens, do you have any use at the middle school? You taught science?
Yes, I have middle school math and science. I failed consumer science. And I have elementary and early childhood.
Certifications, um, when I was at Giant Eagle earlier today, we was actually getting a cake for you to take home with your family. And he said, oh, who was that for? And I said, oh, it was one of our teachers got the doctor and one of the, gave the whole spiel like I always did. And he said, oh, I loved her. So he had you at the middle school, teaching science, and he said he was one of his favorite teachers. So he was glad to have that accomplishment. And I'm very happy that you're doing that because it makes the district, you know, makes the district look good if you have great teachers that are also doing it for us, putting your name out there and getting it out there.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. 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 Well, thank you so much for coming, and I know, is that your mom and dad?
This is my mother-in-law.
Mother-in-law. So thank you so much for coming.
Thank you so much.
And like I said, get the young ones, feel free.
Thank you.
All right, and I also have Jim Bracco. I wanted to bring him here for an update on the sunrise roof. We've been working with that for, for some time now. So you want to tell, Jim, you want to set up the table?
Here, you can come sit, please. You don't got, you don't have a name like that.
Art. Art, he was on the team playing for the WCI. We've been basically baling the smell at the Sunrise School, trying to identify what was making, what was creating the smell at the school. And after many, many things, looking at the sewage system, we finally, um, come to the conclusion that the roof is causing the smell in the school. And we did that by doing environmental testing, um, in several areas of the school. Uh, we did mold, um, and any other, trying to find any anomaly that we could that would create that smell. And, um, it was positively identified that the wet insulation in the roof is creating that smell. And, um, so we got estimates on to replace that roof, and they were presented to the board tonight, and I guess that's what we're going to talk about here this evening, moving forward. Thank you.
All right, and based on that, what are the estimates, and what are, what are your recommendations?
Well, we were going to look at replacing three sections of roof, um, at the school, and I think we were going to approve and not to exceed, what, $800,000 for that?
If, if the board decides to do all three sections, then we would approve not to exceed $800,000. That covers the estimated cost plus any unforeseen conditions they may get into with the decking. Uh, we think that number's, based on our conversation with Garland Roof, that number is probably safe.
And Brett, we fill with, uh, the bond, the, the total bond, and will have room within that to, to cover this house?
Well, as a matter of fact, tomorrow, we're closing on the final piece of the bond issue. Um, the board, as you recall, decided to go to the entire 32 million that we originally approved, as opposed to just going to what the project cost, uh, final estimate was. And, uh, I think, Mr. Iglesias, that's about 31.3 million?
Yeah, almost exactly, I go 1.3, yeah.
So we should have, you know, at a minimum, $700,000 just on the bond money, but we also think there will be money left in the contingencies fund from the project, so it's safe. And if not, we'll take it from our dedicated fund balance if there is a shortfall, but we're pretty confident we're well within the 32 million.
Jim, the, uh, the new roof, it would have the standard 20-year warranty, or would be?
It would be, if we take the, the third option, would be a 30-year, 25 or 30-year guarantee on that.
Okay. But it wouldn't be like the, uh, what, what was there, the, uh, restored roof that was only a five-year one?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we're going to totally replace all the insulation, new membrane, it'll be, it'll be a build-up roof from Garland.
What percent of the total roof is this part?
Well, I would say it's close to maybe 60%. Yeah, we say it's, it's definitely more than 50.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we're looking at the red part, it looks like maybe two-thirds.
Yeah, but there's still other sections of, of rubber roof.
Oh, I see that.
That are in these other areas that we're not going to do.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I would say it would be 60% of the total roof. Maybe a little more.
With the areas that you're talking about have been identified by roofing companies as being bad and need replaced?
Well, they've identified from, uh, Tascano Mayor's being bad, plus, um, that's the areas that there, that's the areas that are emitting the smell into the building.
And those, how many of the other sections, Jim, the other 40%, what's the age of those parts?
They were put in the 90s.
90s, they're, they're pushing their life expectancy too.
They are.
And we have other buildings that need roofing that you foresee, probably within the next five years, we have to be addressing also, correct?
Correct, absolutely.
This is your number one priority in roosting?
Yes, just because of the, because of the smell issues. Um, we have other issues at, for example, in Level Green, we know that roof is wet as well, but, um, because of this issue being possibly a mold and, you know, leading up to something, uh, that's, that could be environmentally unfriendly, that's why we're looking forward with this.
But as of right now, though, Jim, just two, two comments, and, and, uh, there is no findings of anything.
Correct.
Other than the smell.
Correct, it was pos, it was just a nuisance smell at this point in time.
Did they get all the air and wall testing and actually the roof itself, they tested?
From PSI, yes, they did, all that testing in that building. We did this in 2013 as well, but it didn't, um, because we were trying to find them, but it didn't positively identify the roof. But now it's built to that point, that the results basically matched the 2013 and 2015 results matched.
And then if they start, if we approve it tonight, is the hopes that those three sections will be completed by the beginning of school?
That's the...
Best case scenario.
That's the best case, and, you know, depending on the weather.
And availability of the contractors.
Correct.
But they would start with the section that's the worst?
The worst.
So we would definitely get, you would assume they would get that part done before the beginning of the year.
Correct.
You may still be working on those sections.
Yes.
Everything should be done before winter, I'm assuming, correct?
Correct.
Well, how about the work, how much work, well, I guess it's so, it's too hard to tell right now, so I won't even say it. I'm going to say how much work is going to be going on while the kids are in school, but it's too early to suggest that right now.
Depends on how far, how fast they can mobilize and get materials.
We'll get an update, you know, this goes through in August.
And you said Harrison Park Building would need some help too, basically, correct?
Well, Harrison Park just had the five-year refurb on that roof, that was done two years ago. But there are, there are some sections in that roof that are, that are a rubber roof with, you know, ballast that are, that are getting to their life expectancy as well.
And just keep in mind, because time is of the essence, we're, as opposed to going through the traditional bid method, we're going to go through the state-approved, uh, pre-bid contract, where the state has awarded the materials on a certain schedule for a set price, and they've also, uh, awarded the approved labor costs for the contractors. Now, again, the contracts, the bids that, that Garland will solicit on our behalf may deviate due to the hour, number of hours that it, they projected get the job done. And, uh, you know, we have some flexibility in terms of, uh, working with the bidders since, uh, the unit prices have all been approved previously. But if we don't, if we don't go this way, uh, there's no way we'd be able to, with the timeframe, to get it done before the beginning of school.
Garland essentially becomes the project manager of this, right, once that starts?
Does that state pricing set us, is one of the reasons why they set that up, Brett, is because of situations like this?
I believe it is.
Now, the school districts only have a certain amount of time where work can actually be done in a building while there's no kids in it.
And, and, and quite honestly, for items such as this, um, it, it brings stability to the pricing, and it gives districts flexibility and saves them on advertising and, again, the time it takes to get, uh, the whole process approved, so, yes.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have questions for Jim Bracco at this time, or?
It's not going to get better. Is this something we were going to put in on, uh, today for?
How about the other, you have severe roofing situation with McColl or Penn or Trafford?
Well, they're all, they're all, they're all aged roofs. We don't have really even, you know, the, uh, we have very few new roofs in the district. No, um, Tascano Mayor is doing a evaluation on all our roofs right now. They were at several schools today to give us budget numbers and total condition of the roofs on their perspective. So we ought to have that report to you very shortly.
Phil, you'll read that instead of Dallas.
What are the building's grasses? This roof in this building, Jim, what's the situation with this?
Well, it's a Garland roof, it's a build-up roof. It's, the build-up roof seems to be in good shape. Now, the rubber roof sections are going to be replaced.
Renovation?
Yes.
And does it make sense due to total sunrise at this point?
Well, I don't know if you would be able to get that, be able to get that done in time and the budget, you know, we can, that roof, we did some work to relieve those issues on those rubber roofs, and, uh, we can look at those at a later time. Right now, we haven't had a leak in one of those rubber roofs in the last two years over the winter, so those roofs are holding up pretty well.
Okay.
The guy with the roofs are leaking, are Level Green in here, so where are you setting the table?
Well, we had some sections, yeah, we had roof leaks this winter in both those schools, but not on the build, not on the refurbished, on the refurbished, um, sections, it was on other sections of the build-up, of the rubber roof.
Brett, under this agreement, Garland will hold the contract, then?
We would hold the contract, but they would be the PM, basically, yes.
Okay. Because the way the motions were, the status with Garland?
Well, our, yeah, our contract is with Garland. We are contracting with Garland. And then Garland's going out and securing, uh, actually, the way this program works, we'll buy the, the, um...
Turn.
Material directly, and they'll arrange the contractors.
But Garland will be submitting bills to us?
Correct.
We have say-so, and he does work.
Correct.
True statement.
Can we still get competitive bids?
Yes, we will ask them to get at least three qualified bidders to submit bids to them. And we'll communicate those to you, you know, before we take any, uh, before we finalize any contracts, you know, we'll send them around for you to review and make any comments that you may have.
Any other questions for Jim?
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks.
And that's actually all I have under, um, information.
All right, thank you, Dr. Harris. Uh, no one signed up for recognition visitors unless, Carrie, you got something to say? Nothing you want to tell us, since you're the only visitor tonight? Okay, may I have a motion to approve the treasurer's report and the high school extracurricular fund?
Motion.
Seven.
Second by Phil. Question. Question being called for, all in favor of motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. May I have a motion to approve the list of bills for the month of June?
Motion.
Second by Tony.
Question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. Any old business tonight?
We have none, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Iglesias. Prior to tonight's meeting, we held an executive session to receive legal advice to discuss personnel matters, including Act 93 compensation, confidential secretaries, hiring of staff, and to deliver potential sale, discuss the potential sale of property. We also received, uh, met to receive information on construction matters. Um, athletics and extracurricular, Dr. Koschko.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, do you have a few things? Move to employ the following personnel. New employment is contingent upon the receipt of all necessary documentation and acceptance of Act 34, 115, and 114 waivers from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania within 30 days. Tina, uh, Mapee Stewart, Drona, sponsor.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Nissen. Question. Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the opening of the Marstey Girls Assistant Soccer Coach Position due to the resignation of the head coach. This is according to District Paulson.
Second. Question. Second by Dr. Tre. Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Have the all, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Koschko. Budget and finance, Mr. Kachasik.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I recommend that the 2015-16 school district budget and schedules in the total amount of $51,521,915, properly advertised in accordance with the school laws of Pennsylvania, be adopted and filed in the official board minutes to include the following taxes as shown in the budget. Real estate tax at a rate of 77.85 mils, 7.785 on each $100 of $100 assessed valuation of taxable property. Real estate tax rate for the Allen County portion located in Trafford Borough is 15.55 mils, and the rest as listed.
Um, second. I have a question. Uh, I, after listening to Jim Bracco, I notice this calls for a 1 mil tax increase. And, um, I'm not opposed to that, but I think our, our index is a lot of about 1.9. And I, I'd like to recommend that, uh, we go to 1.9, that 0.9 be set aside strictly for immediate, present capital improvements or future capital improvements, which I've done many years now, and trying to build up a nest egg here like we did with the nine mils that we now use here at the high school. Our buildings are aging, and I know we are going to have to have a comprehensive plan. We're going to have to consolidate schools and elementary schools, or middle schools, or whatever we're going to plan on doing, we have different options presented by different people. But we have to, we have to start banking our money, and, uh, to eventually have to pay for the renovations. Uh, enrollment is declining, not so, not significantly, but it is going down. But I'd like to make a motion, we have increased 1.9 mils.
So that's a motion to amend...
That's right.
The motion that's on the floor that so needs a second.
That's usual.
Do we have a second for the motion?
The original motion?
Yeah, a second for mine. The original one. No, no second for...
Do we have a second for a 1.9 mil increase? Do we have a second for the 1.9 increase, mil increase? I guess we table a motion then?
Oh, the motion.
No, the motion fails.
I'm sorry, motion fails, like a second.
So you're back to the original motion?
Yep. Back to the original motion. And we did have a second for that motion? What question?
Doctor Trey.
Have a question?
Question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
All right. Move to grant administration permission to advertise for bids for those items and projects requiring competitive bidding according to statute and appearing in the 2015-16 school year budget as well as the current construction budget.
Second. Second by Mr. Petrusy.
Question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to authorize the administration to pay all end-of-year invoices which are a part of the 2014-15 school district operations and were included in the current budget and to make end-of-year budgetary transfers.
Second.
Second by Dr. Koshka.
Question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move that the following banks be named depositories for the 2015-16 school year for the accounts as listed below.
Second. Second by Mr. Petrusy.
Question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to authorize the administration to make payments amounting to $16,776.20 for credits earned by professional employees in accordance with the negotiated agreement. The list as presented to the board showing the individual payments due will be filed with the official minutes of this meeting.
Second. Second by Mr. Petrusy.
Question. Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to assign $2,167,000 of fund balance for future retirement and/or building project expenses.
Second. Second by Dr. Trey.
Question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the expenditures for the high school renovation project according to the schedule as listed.
Seven.
Second by Mrs. Zissin.
Question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to accept proposal from Gateway Engineering for civil engineering fees for sanitary sewer repairs at Trafford Middle School and the Phase II sanitary sewer improvements at the high school at a cost of $9,650.
Second.
Second by Dr. Trey.
Question. Question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following change order request as listed, and each of these had been reviewed last release information meeting.
Second.
Question. Second by Mrs. Zissin.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
That is all I have this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Kachasik. Building, grounds, and safety, Mr. Kachasik, he...
Thank you, Mr. President.
Take that back.
Move to employ the following personnel. New employment is contingent upon the receipt of all necessary documentation and the acceptance of Act 34, 151, and 114 waivers from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania within thirty days. Alan Simpson, Calhoun Elementary, Position Number 3, at 1490 per hour effective June 9, 2015.
Second.
Second by Dr. Trey.
Question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the Trafford Level Green Athletic Associations request to add a scoreboard on each of the Trafford fields at no cost to the district.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Zissin.
Question.
I have a question.
And it actually, it is a manual, you asked me to...
I did, manual, no electronic.
Manual. He actually wanted to send a picture, but I asked Janice, we didn't get it in time.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to authorize the administration to enter into an agreement with Garland DBS Incorporated in accordance with U.S. Communities Contract for Repairs to the Southern Rise Elementary Roof in the amount not to exceed $800,000.
Second.
Second by Dr. Koshka.
Question. Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
That is all I have this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Kachasik. Employees Relations Negotiations and Transportation, Mrs. Zissin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve the Act 93 agreement effective July 1, 2015 through June 30, 2019. A copy of this contract will be filed with the official minutes of this meeting.
Second. Second by Mr. Petrusy.
Question. Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
I'd like to have for Mrs. Zissin sign off that hats off to Mr. Neemick again and Doc Terrace and Scott Inlays for all their assistance. And I think it's fair that they also took a kick in the freeze. And it's what we've asked employees to do to help us pay for some of the Peers benefits that just escalated greatly in the past five or six years. But I just want to just mention that. It's a lot of time. And Mr. Neemick, as I ran across his brother at the hall this year, he says ever since he was a little kid, he never left any leap unturned. And he did the same thing again during negotiations.
That's not what he says to me.
I think it should be noted, too, that after this agreement, all employees of the district have taken a freeze at this point. Is that correct, Mr. Lego?
With the exception of teachers, not at the top step of the salary scale.
Food service, Dr. Trey.
No report at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Trey. Personnel and curriculum, Mr. Petrusy.
Same as name. Move to approve the additional substitute teachers support first round for the month of June 2015.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kachasik.
Question being called for, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the tentative assignments of professional personnel as presented by the superintendent for 2015-16 school year. The assignments, for the most part, were recommended by the principals. Final assignments were reviewed and approved by the board prior to deadline date of August 24, 2015.
Second.
Second question. Mr. Kachasik.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following school physicians and dentists for the Penn Trapper School of 2015-16 School Year. Dr. Wong, $17,000. Dr. Backsheep, $3 per student. And Dr. Gates, a dentist, $2 per student.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kachasik.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to accept the final official range for instructional first round for 2014-16 school year as determined by the principals and superintendent.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kachasik.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to extend some of the contracts of following first round for 2015 school year as recommended by the superintendent. Salaries will be determined in accordance with the negotiating agreement as listed.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kachasik.
Question. Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to authorize the administration to post advertise, interview, and hire candidates for any vacancies that occurred prior to our August meeting, our first August meeting.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kachasik.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to accept the following return resignations. Deborah Agelson, Library McCullough Elementary, effective May 26, 2015. And Victoria Nijack, Library Level Green Elementary School, effective June 21, 2015.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kachasik.
Question being called for, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
Both, sorry, both ladies were very missed. Unfortunately, they gave me their retirements after we had a retirement ceremony, or I would have had to come to the board as well. They just felt like it was right, so it was a nice time.
That being said, are you still able to give them the...
Oh, we got the clock.
I appreciate you doing that. I think it's a real good thing to...
It's a nice gesture. It's a nice gesture.
They need the honor after all the years of service they put in.
Yeah, how many years of service have these, do you happen to know?
Not offhand.
I think it's a lot.
Yeah. They served, well, maybe together, maybe forty years.
That's a big number.
Move to employ the following summer help. New employment is contingent upon the receipt of necessary documentation and acceptance of Act 34, 151, 114 waivers called for Pennsylvania within thirty days. Jesse Nims, Ground Health and Ice 35, an hour effective May 26, 2015.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kachasik.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following leave request from Deborah Hidu, Maria MacArthur, and Michelle Wise.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kachasik.
Question. Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
That's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Petrusy. Policy Public Relations and Legislative Title II.
Dr. Trey.
Dr. Trey, if you please take that.
I'd be glad to do that. We have nine items. Move to accept and file the minutes of the superintendent's information to be meeting held on Monday, May 4, 2015.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Zissin.
Question.
Question being called for, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
Move to continue the resolution adopted on June 14, 1979, providing for change in the roll call procedures for matters as outlined in Section 508 of the Public School Code of 1949 during the 2015-16 school year. Copy of the resolution was filed on June 14, 1979, Board Minutes.
Second. Second by Mr. Petrusy.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to continue the bond coverage of the secretary of the Board of School Directors, Mr. Brett Lago, and the Assistant Secretary of the Board of School Directors, Mrs. Janice Oliver, in the amount of $50,000 for the 2015-16 school year.
Too low.
Second.
Second by Mr. Petrusy.
Question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
I move to grant permission to the school board members, secretary, solicitor, district administrators on a case-by-case basis to attend the annual convention of the National School Boards Association, American Association of School Administrators, or any other educational convention during the 2015-16 school year, which will be of educational or financial advantage in the Penn Trapper School District. In addition, the superintendent may approve any conference or workshop for any staff member which is conducted in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. An itemized verified statement of expenditures will be maintained in the business office made a part of the record following all conference or workshops attended.
Second.
Second by Dr. Koshka.
Question.
Yeah, I have a question. I just want to say to the public that it's been quite a while since any board member has ever taken advantage. It's been a long while because we've practiced frugality with any kind of board, with any conventions. And we always did go to one every year for many years. And with a severe cutback, we were a lot of the two. We always used to go to one. But for the past ten, fifteen years, I don't think we've won any.
Well, I've been here for thirteen years now, and there's not been one board member go to a national conference.
There's no, there's only one person in the public. But there's no board members that have been, it's been, I think, thirteen years. At least. That's hats off to approval this board is. Question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Sorry. Move to authorize the administration to submit the federal programs applications. That's Title I, Title II, A, for the 2015-16 school year.
Second.
Second by Dr. Koshka.
Question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve participation in the curriculum and non-instructional resource services department of the Westmore Intermediate Unit Number 7, Co-op Drug-Free Schools and Community Act of 1986 for the 2015-16 school year.
Second.
Second by Mr. Petrusy.
Question. Question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to adopt attachment A of the I E A V P L 108-446 rider program narrative for the 2015-16 school year as requested by the Westmore Intermediate Unit as listed.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kachasik.
Question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
I move to tenderly approve policy number 709.1, Administrative Regulation 709.1 A or Dad Zero, entry on the school property into school buildings as submitted to the school board.
Second. Second by Mr. Petrusy.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
And the final one. I move to give final approval to revise policy 701.1 of the facility's naming. The revision allows facilities to be named for persons who are employed by the school district or active in its operations or those who hold public office. A copy of this policy will be filed with the official minutes of this meeting.
Second. Second by Mr. Petrusy.
Question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
I do have a question. The idea of the tiles that we talked about?
Yes.
When are we going to go public with that?
We should have them out by August.
The applications for people to get? Okay.
You can do it electronically during?
Yeah, electronically. And Mrs. Haberberger's working on it. She's helping us with our naming committee and getting those out.
Right, so what about the rooms and all that? How are people going to know about those as well?
We're going to have to keep advertising it. We had imported them out. Initially, we had a couple of people come in place with Mr. Coy as well as Mike Ginsburg. Chris Hayes even took a room. I took a room. So we had a couple.
But are we going to send that out with this communication with the cost of a room as well?
No matter when we send something out, we should add it to everything, keep it going. We also had some people from a different group interested in the wrestling room, which we already have some interest in. So it seems like a lot of people are interested in the same areas.
Right.
And then Dr. Trey's not very involved in that.
Depends on square footage and how big it is. I think we should send it out when we send out. If we have a comprehensive pricing strategy, I think we should send it out when we send out the...
What can you do?
To serve it.
Is it on the website?
I believe it's still on the website.
I was just wondering, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I don't know if everybody goes searching.
That's a trouble.
I think you send it, you do it on the...
I'm thinking more.
Send it out with everybody, yeah.
I'm sure it's in the media.
I was just asking. I didn't know.
I think the majority of people don't know that.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Because I don't know.
I think the tiles will be very...
I don't know the prices, that's what I ask.
That's what I know, yeah.
I'll give, you give me a room? I hope so.
I'm working on my place of employment.
If you do it, remember, we can make payments. You can make payments, monthly payments over ten years. I'm doing my room, and the cost was $12,000, but I'm doing it over ten years, so it's only going to be $1,200 a year.
Payments are interest-free.
Payments are interest-free, and we'll give you a tax.
And it's based off square footage, right?
I mean, Mr. Benches.
The video room's forty grand.
Forty grand.
Certain rooms are a higher dollar amount because it costs more to build a gymnasium versus a classroom.
That was a nice one, taking my wife's classroom.
There are a couple questions about, for example, if you want to buy a room, it's done a particular way, and some people want to contribute to that room. So basically, we're trying to look at how we deal with this. If someone says, yeah, I want to take this particular room for twenty thousand dollars, but I want to wait until about eight or ten people, they'll guarantee it, and they're going to wait for some other people when they're into that contribution. So there's some logistical thing that has to be worked out. So they can make a contribution, but someone will guarantee the payment by the end of that time. That's the number in that category.
We've had a lot of success come out of Penn Trapper, and it's nice, a lot of them want to give, can I get back?
Okay, thank you. Tax and insurance, insurance centers, Mr. Stovard.
Thank you, Mr. President of the Administration. Received quotations for all sports insurance for the 2015-16 school year. All quotations were reviewed by the Administration, and it is recommended that all sports insurance for 2015-16 be awarded to A.G. Administrators Incorporated with coverage as follows.
Correct.
Do you have a question?
As listed.
Are you?
Yes.
Is this a one-time payment to ten-three?
Yes.
And does that cover every student?
It covers every athlete that we have, yes.
And what's the deductible or the claim for the athlete to participate, they have to pay anything for it?
Uh, I think if, I think there may be a hundred dollar deductible if they have a claim, but I'll send you over a copy of the policy.
How's it differ from the, you know, if I have my insurance provider? How's it differ? Who's the primary and secondary?
This is primary, and then your insurance would be secondary.
Okay, but it's offered for free for all our students?
It's offered for free for all our students, yes. Because some students may not have insurance at home.
Right, I understand.
So, yes. And this is the same price that we've had for the past.
They say absolutely, price for everybody.
Yeah.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, on favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
The Administration received quotations for student accident insurance for the 2015-16 school year. All quotations were reviewed by the Administration. It was recommended that the student accident insurance for 2015-16 be awarded to the A.G. Administrators with coverage as follows. All students, K through twelve, twenty dollars per year. Twenty-four hours coverage is a hundred and twenty-four dollars per year.
Second.
Second by Mr. Petrusi.
Question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, on favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to adopt the Homestead and Farmstead Exclusion Resolution effective July first, 2015. A complete copy of the resolution will be filed with the official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Second by Mr. Petrusi.
Question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, on favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to authorize the continuance of the following Act 511 tax resolutions and taxes for the 2015-16 school year. A complete copy of the resolutions will be filed with the official minutes of this meeting as listed.
Second. Question.
Second by Dr. Koschka. Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, on favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move that the Board of School Directors adopt the following resolution. May it be resolved, and it is hereby resolved by the School Board, the Board of School Directors of the Penn Trapper School District, that there is hereby assessed, levied, and imposed for the fiscal year beginning July first, 2015, ending June thirtieth, 2016, a tax on all real estate in the district subject to taxation at the rate of seven, seventy-seven point three-five mils, seven point seven-eight-five dollars for each one hundred dollars of assessed valuation of taxable property. The real estate tax rate for the Alloian County portion located in Trafford Borough is fifteen point five-five mil.
Second. Question.
Second by Mr. Petrusi. Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, on favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no.